Time having arrived, I call this meeting to order. If you could, please stand and help us salute our beautiful flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, councilors and guests, I have a little something that I have to read so that it's actually in the record. This is a public hearing and a comment period to be held here for the FY25 budget today, June 17, 2024, at 5:30 in the City Chamber, 2nd Floor, City Hall, 45 School Street, Brockton MA. Please sign in with the clerk or here in the chambers if you'd like to speak. And each person will have two minutes and two minutes to speak. The clerk will let you know when you're 15 minutes away from your two minutes.
15 seconds.
15 seconds away from your two minutes. So let's keep that orderly as we go forward. Mr. Clerk, the first person.
Number one, Richard Ripley. Please step forward to the desk.
First, I want to say good evening, councilors and the people of Brockton. The proposed fiscal year 2025 budget is clear proof that our system of government is broken. The fiscal health of our city has reached the breaking point. We are faced with a clear choice. Will we, the people of...
Hold on a second. Could you please remove your cap while you're in here, sir? Please. And anybody else that has a cap, please remove that while you're in the chamber. Continue.
Is that going to cost me time?
Oh, I've got you.
Um, all right, I'll start again. Good evening, councilors and people of Brockton. The proposed fiscal year 2025 budget is clear proof that our system of government is broken. The fiscal health of our city has reached the breaking point. We are faced with a clear choice. Will we, the people of Brockton, allow our out-of-touch city leaders to continue to take Brockton down the path of fiscal irresponsibility, which will end with the state taking control of our purse strings? Or will we, the people of Brockton, finally stand up and say loud and clear, enough is enough? We all know the facts. Brockton taxpayers have paid millions of dollars to auditors for years of supposed work. Costs of retirement, pensions, benefits, debt service, discrimination lawsuit, et cetera, are approaching $130 million and continue to climb. Brockton is currently experiencing about $100 million in budget shortfalls for various projects around our city. Our mayor has a history of not taking responsibility for budget shortfalls and shifting the blame onto others. Our mayor has a history of waiting until a fiscal issue reaches a crisis point before addressing it. Our mayor refuses to voluntarily reach out and speak with the people on important fiscal issues. The incompetence and mismanagement of the city council in assisting our mayor by refusing to ask the mayor the tough questions about the fiscal health of our city must end. I say now to the people of Brockton, this all points to a serious problem in our city. We're all pawns. We're all subject to the mercy of the politicians who find a way to manipulate the system and ultimately manipulate us. People of Brockton, we have to do better than this because we are better than this. Our mayor has lost his way on important budget issues, thereby increasing the cost to taxpayers. His day has passed. His style of leadership and his fiscal policies are divisive and are tearing our city apart. He has become the problem. Therefore, I am asking him to spare the taxpayers, students, and hard-working people of this city another 17 months of misery, anguish, and voluntarily step aside as mayor before he completely destroys the city he loves and spent his life building. Thank you.
Thank you.
John C. Williams.
Mr. Williams, welcome.
Good evening, City Council. I'm here once again this year speaking on our school budget. Last year, uh, I want to bring attention to the fact that you were all warned about the school deficit and mismanagement prior to August. I'm pointing out that you were all warned about the deficit and mismanagement prior to August. Last year at this time, I sat before you. I told you specifically that transportation was the major problem. Counselor Farwell and Troy Clarkson vehemently denied that, speaking on the long-term gains that we'll have by creating this department and buying these buses. So now we sit a year later. What I projected is coming to fruition. So now I'm left with some questions. Why has this body done nothing to bring the truth to the people of Brockton? Why are we wasting time and money and resources on an interim superintendent search? Mike Thomas has been medically cleared to return? So why are we looking to pay somebody else during dire financial during a dire financial crisis? Why are we looking for someone else to pay while we still have to pay him? Same goes with Aldo Patronio and Chris Correa.
15 seconds.
These men know more about the budget than you. With my last 15 seconds, none of you, none of the school committee, none of these independent auditors, have brought up the fact that we pay millions of dollars to Chris Carney and his businesses. I want to know why. Because we have a CFO who's in charge of the school side and the city side both now. Chris Carney sits on the board of his Sober Living Foundation, yet he's entered into millions of dollars of contract with this city. And you all have done nothing to protect us. Thank you.
Yvette Montero.
Good evening. My name is Yvette Santeo Montero, and I am a parent of three children in Brockton Public Schools. I am the co-president of Brockton Interfaith Community, a leader with Brockton Coalition of Educational Justice, a teacher with Sabuda Youth Programs, a family ambassador with Coordinated Family and Community Engagement of Brockton, and the co-founder of the Let's Make Friends Play Group at the Main Library in Brockton that serves hundreds of families in the community. It has been brought to my attention that Brockton is looking to significantly cut the library's funding. Decisions like this make it evident that you do not understand the community in which you serve. The library is a beacon in Brockton, and families depend on these programs to supplement what Brockton Public Schools cannot provide. Families with young children go to the library to receive free educational resources to assist with their children's developmental needs. These programs have become part of so many families' routine schedule. For anyone who understands child development, understands the importance of having a routine for young children. It also provides countless resources for parents, including English and immigration classes, to name just a few. Cutting funding from the library will hinder families' ability to access these vital resources that will set them up for success in school and in life. We, the people, ask that you consider the lives of the families and childrens that you are elected to serve. If we are not considered in these decisions, we will have to find and elect those who will.
Thank you, ma'am.
Dr. Amina Pilgrim.
Good evening, everyone. I am here as a parent, as a taxpayer, um, as a resident. And I'm here out of a love for the city where I've chosen to live and raise my son and have my family. Over the past few months, whether it's at the school committee, um, here at meetings or here, many citizens have spoken about the fact that budgets are moral documents. And as many of you know, that is a phrase that Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. used. And so I wanted to bring that up in this space, knowing some of you, as I do personally, having collaborated with many of you. I wanted to bring that phrase up and to remind you that it means that the budgets that we pass reflect our values. So I want to ask you, as people who, I assume, love the city of Brockton as much as all of us in this room do, what is it that you value the most? And what kind of future are you creating for our city? What kind of legacy are you leaving for our city? The investments that we make will create that future or will sabotage that future. So in particular, I'm asking you to put the schools first. I'm asking you to put important programs like the libraries first. And I'm asking you to put our future first because all of these public programs serve our children, our most vulnerable. And with the power that you have, you can make a choice to either support the most vulnerable and empower them and share, um, the influence that you have in a positive way, um, or not. So again, out of love for our city and our families, I urge you, um, to think very carefully about the values that you uphold as you decide the determination of the budget. Thank you.
Angelica Faunce.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Angelica Faunce. I'm here this evening wearing several hats. I am a fellow Brocktonian. I am the director of organizing with the Massachusetts Coalition to Prevent Gun Violence. And I'm also here as a leader with the Brockton Coalition for Education Justice. This evening, we are making the ask to our leaders to ensure that FY25 school budget remains robust at the recommended 232.7 million net school spending budget to ensure we can adequately address the needs of all our students. We alongside the community at large will continue to advocate for and demand budget transparency and participatory budgeting. We also want to address that while budget cuts are necessary to fix past mistakes, let's not continue to make more mistakes. We must reconsider decisions made recently, such as decreasing the capacity of our EDI office and moving beloved programs such as the ALC, Sabuda, and countless others. In addition, on June 7th, we reached out to 10 municipal leaders, both on the city council and school committee, to connect and build relationships and gain a better understanding of not only their thoughts surrounding the city and school budget, but that of their constituents. To date, we've heard back from three out of the 10 and have yet to establish any confirmed meetings. As elected officials, you must not negate the importance of listening to your constituents and building relationships that allow for much-needed dialogue. To conclude, and it is not dawned on me that I went after my shiro to reiterate, a statement that I've shared many times in other meetings, a budget is a moral document. And I ask our leaders, what are you saying to our community, to our children, when you marginalize the work of social justice? Data tells us community safety comes from investing in education and supportive programs that tackle root causes, not overfunding law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barry Shelley.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Barry Shelley. I am the parent of a 2023 graduate of Brockton High, a member of the Board of the Brockton Interfaith Community, and also active in the Brockton Coalition for Education Justice. We're all very aware that there are many challenges facing the council and the school committee regarding the budget for the public schools. They're all important. I just want to highlight one that's very consistent with what other people here have tried to highlight today, tonight, which is in terms of our budget priorities. But one specific fact that I think is important to consider that I hope will be taken into account is that Brockton, the city of Brockton, according to Desi Statistics, actually provides very little in funding over and above the foundational budget that is required by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Even compared to other low-income gateway cities in the state, including Lawrence, Fall River, and others, we come in just about last, if not last, in terms of what we provide out of our city budget over and above what the state and federal funds come and what we are required to give. In fact, in 2020, we didn't even make our mandated minimum requirement. I'm aware that there are many, 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 uh, you know, demands on a city budget. All are important. Public services, roads, economic development, et cetera. But I think it's imperative, and again echoing what other people have said, and even in the face of deficits and cuts that we might be facing, it's imperative that this city prioritize in our city budget, not just with state funds, the public schools. Thank you.
Quincy Daddel? I'm not sure if...
Quincy Daddel?
Yes, thank you.
Good evening, councilors, councilwoman. Well, I'm back again. Last year I was here. Guess what? No change. Sad. It only got worse. The dumpster got bigger. We can look outside the door, still the same shit. Excuse my language. But it's even worse this time. The school budget, nothing. It's gone. Look at that $50 million for the safety building. $20, $30 million up the street for the sewer. We gave you a lot of money. Where's the money at? Nobody wants no answers on that. Who's going to be held accountable for all these finances we've been doing? You guys are sitting there, you guys say you guys do a great job. I understand that. You guys here every day. But that was my house, it'd be foreclosed and torn down. You guys don't look outside these streets. You live around that corner, Tex area. You see all the people out there that need help in the parks. Nobody's helping them. I've gave a few questions across the board, just to test the waters. Jeffrey's answered me. Mr. Thompson has answered me. Winfer has answered me quite a few different occasions, which I appreciate. I researched my street. My street hasn't been touched in over 30-plus years. I haven't seen a sweeper down there yet this year. Oh, they're going by every day, every month. They're going to do their service, they're going to do this and that. I got 10 pounds of needles every friggin' week. Condoms, sex toys on Bradford Street. I have two beautiful granddaughters. I pay my taxes. You guys say, "Give me money." I give you my money. I take the slice of bread out of my loaf of bread to give to you, to give to you to take care of my community, my services, my water, my public schools. There ain't nothing here no more. You guys, this city is burning down. You guys know that. This is the way it is. That's all I got to say. I was here last year, said the same thing. It's just getting worse. So next year, I'll be back again, and we'll see if you guys can accomplish what has to be accomplished. I appreciate it. Thanks for serving your public.
Amelia Brandis, or Emily?
Uh, she's in the bathroom right now. She'll be out.
We'll go with Alenda Salwin. Silva, thank you. She didn't write it out.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm not a resident in Brockton, but I have, uh, three or four grandchildren. They live in Brockton, they go to school in Brockton. I don't want to repeat the same thing that's been said, but we want a better school. We want to know what the money that has been put at our school, where it goes. Because our kids go to school, they stay in big classrooms because there is not enough teachers. There is not an after-school program for many of our kids. They go to the school without many supports. So we see the street where my kids can play, it's not safe. So we will ask for this money that comes from Brockton, where it goes, where they put it. So we ask, you know, we thank for this opportunity because we know many people do not know about this hearing, this public hearing. So as a BWE member, we want many people, many of our communities, so they know. Because many years it's been common, same thing, but people do not know about it. So we want to make sure some of our community know about it and be about it. Even though I don't live here, I spend most of my time in Brockton. So thank you very much.
Emily Beckett?
She's back.
Emily Brandis.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Emilia Brandal. I don't know even, I don't even know if I make sense what I'm saying right now, but I'm going to say it aloud for everyone to hear because all those, you know, I've been here about the school budgets and all this. We all been paying the taxes here in Massachusetts. I know here in Brockton. But everybody been complaining about the, you know, the kids doesn't have a program for school. I have no more kids at school. I have no more kids at school. But my concern also is not only that, also it is. We've been doing the tax pay, but whatever, you know, when we need a service, we have to pay for it. For the couple, for the several years, we've been paying these extra fees, which I don't know what this fee is from because our community, nobody is over there to do any work. But we've been paying disaster fees. And we've been, we've been like, been charging. Every, all the time you put one, you know, one items from your house out on the street, you have to get paid for it. And when you get off and walk on the street, all you see is a trash everywhere. There's a trash everywhere. So how we going to, you know, do the Brockton, do a way to look like a community to live in when we all is a COVID-19? I know, me myself, I have a problem. As a lot of us have a problem. We're not going to show up here to talk because we don't speak English. Our English is bad, is bad. What we want to say, we cannot say because we embarrassed it.
15 seconds.
There's no interpreter here to speak for us. We don't have no COVID-19 interpreter what we need because if we need that, it's going to be different stories. So all I'm asking for the next meeting, like if it's possible, for you guys to have a COVID-19 translator here so everybody can come in and speak their piece. Because I know everybody wants to come over here to speak because most, you know, people living in Brockton, I can say 50% of us is COVID-19. But we have nobody. And we are the one who put our money here. We don't get service because nobody will understand that.
Time.
So, thank you, thank you.
Rosaria Pino.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Rosaria. First of all, thank you for this opportunity.
Lean into the microphone a little bit, please.
Pull it towards you.
More?
Pull it towards you.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity for us to be here to talk about the concerns that our community is confronting. I am a part of Brockton Workers Alliance, and I'm a community organizer. And I'm here to read Isabel, Isabel Lopes' testimony. She's our director, and she cannot be here to, she's attending another meeting. So my name is Isabel Lopes, Director of Nonprofit Organization. I am a mother and a homeowner that pay my bills, my taxes in the city. Like me, many of, sorry, many of us here didn't know about these processes and how we can be part of this decision-making process to understand or support the decision-making process. We are here today as residents asking you all to provide information on how the budget gets decided and how we can together be part of the decision process. We are going to be working in a more participatory budget process in our city. And would like to your input on how to be allies and listening to our community more proactively when it comes to listening about their concerns and priorities. Appreciate all your work and input in our communities. Thank you all for representing our communities. Isabel Lopes, Brockton Workers Alliance Director.
Vito? Victorino, or is that...
Sir.
Can you just state your name?
For the record, yeah.
Victorino Ramos.
Victorino. What's the last name?
Ramos.
Ramos.
Thank you.
Mi nombre es Victorino Ramos.
My name is Victorino Ramos.
Hago parte de la organización Alianza de Trabajadores de Brockton.
I'm a member of Brockton Workers Alliance.
Considerable.
Antes de todo quería agradecer la oportunidad de estar aquí.
So first of all, I would thank for this opportunity.
Y traer las preocupaciones que nos afligen a todo aquí en esta ciudad.
And we want to bring our preoccupation that from our city here.
Yo quería hablar principalmente de transporte público.
I want to talk about transportation.
Ónibus.
The bus.
Como sabemos nosotros tenemos trabajadores que trabajan por la noche, por la madrugada.
As we know, we have workers that work at night, on the down, in the morning.
Pero los que trabajan la noche y la madrugada muchas veces no tienen oportunidad de disfrutar de ese transporte.
The people that work at night, sometimes they don't have the opportunity to use this transportation.
Porque el transporte tiene un horario hasta, creo hasta las 10 de la noche.
Because the transportation, I think, is up to 10 o'clock in the night.
Por tanto, aquí nosotros pedimos que ese transporte sea y horario de transporte sea ampliado por toda la noche y también por la madrugada.
So what do we ask for transportation to still work on late at night?
Así dar oportunidad a los trabajadores que trabajan la noche y la madrugada.
And then they give the opportunity for the people that work after 10 or 11 for the down.
Porque mayoría de las veces gastan todo su dinero en Uber para regresar a la casa. Entonces eso no está justo.
Because not having the transportation that they stay longer, they have to use Uber or other vehicle transportation, and they spend a lot of money on that.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Nicholas D'Agostino?
Uh, I'm sorry. He said it was honorable because they already talked about the same thing.
Okay. Jamal Brathwaite? Did he leave?
Hello, Brockton city councilors and Brockton residents. My name is Jamal Brathwaite of 18 Parkview Lane. And my public comment is to highlight the need for the city council to approve a city budget that is balanced and includes resources to remediate the numerous financial control issues that exist and has negatively impacted Brockton Public Schools, students, and our most vulnerable and at-risk populations. Prior to the approval of the budget, I am asking that the city council obtain from the mayor a consolidated list of all the known internal control deficiencies and issues identified by open architects, the external auditors, which includes RSM, as well as the... as well as the Larson Allen External Audit Firm, if they have any input, as well as issues identified by management themselves that require remediation to prevent a future deficit and to prevent a risk to public education, a risk to city services, and a risk to residents being overtaxed, all due to a lack of internal controls over the city budget and spending. The significance is so that the City Council can compare this consolidated list of issues with the budget proposal to verify that the budget reflects resources in the areas needed to remediate the numerous financial control failures that exist and to prevent a future deficit. Control failures include the widespread use and existence of MUNIS override access, authorization that is statutory limited to the city internal auditor and was acceptable by many employees, which resulted in overspending more than the authorized amounts approved by the City Council and led to the breach of compliance with Chapter 324 of Acts of 1990. There is also a risk regarding the grant administration and counting knowledge gaps and staffing needs that are needed in the Brockton Public Schools. The impact is that the city has to send a quarter million dollars back to the state because we didn't use money at a time when Brockton Public Schools needed money the most. We have a lack of a school procurement process when hiring vendors, a lack of a purchase order system.
Time.
Thank you. We need internal controls. Please ask for a list of control deficiencies before you approve the city budget. Thank you.
That's everybody that I have signed up. We're checking the sheet out front just to make sure nobody came late and signed up. Does anybody who didn't get a chance to sign in want to say your two minutes, or it's all been said? We'll just check that sheet. Pedro Louis... Jui? I'm sorry if I can't read it. Pedro Louis... Nope. How about... Rito Fernandez, maybe? Will you state your name for the record, please, when you sit down?
Buenas tardes a todos.
Good evening, all.
What is... I'm sorry, your name?
Rita Fernandez.
Rito Fernandez.
Okay, put it continue.
Okay, buenas tardes a todos. Degradar este momento, este privilegio que se usa de palabra.
I think for this moment, I was the privilege to use my words. So I want to talk about education. I know some people even get a good education, but it's a lot of part due to the language. Sometimes they cannot translate what they want to say. So it's very important to put a paper that is wise in the area, who knows what's done as an area of education, not put anybody to be part of education or to be part of the school. So I know sometimes the city want to invest in some people, but that is some people that is in the school, working the area education, but they're not ready for that position. So for the better education, we'd like to have someone that is qualified to be on the area education, to be a teacher, or to work at the school area. So as a part of educator, so that's my advice. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, there's no one else that wants to approach and speak. I am going to close this portion of our budget process. And first and foremost, I want to thank you all for having, taking the time to speak to us. And you've been heard. We want to make sure that you know that you've been heard. There's things that we can do, things that we cannot do, things that we have the power to do, things that we do not have the power to do. So I just want to make sure that we understand that. And this concludes the portion of our public hearing process. And we will take a short recess and then go right into the budget hearings.